Technical difficulties with our iPads, but we have a small presentation before we get started. Hold on a second. So there will be no outbursts this evening in this meeting. If there's an issue, please contact the police officers that are here in the room for us. But we'll go ahead and get started in just a second. Get the ball rolling. Clerk, you ready?
Yes.
All right. The meeting of the Aurora City Council for December 12th, 2023 is hereby called to order. For the clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Yamas.
Here.
Alderwoman Garza.
Here.
Alderman Masiacos.
Present.
Alderman Denal.
Here.
Alderman Franco.
Here.
Alderman Seville.
Here.
Alderman Tolliver.
Here.
Alderwoman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Bug.
Here.
Alderwoman Bade.
Here.
Alderman Lash.
Present.
Alderman Warman.
Here.
Mayor Irvin is present.
Alderman Yamas and Alderman Bug request permission to participate remotely per Section 2-80, based on a reasonable anticipation of an extended illness. Is there a motion to allow Alderman Yamas and Alderman Bug to participate remotely? Motion made by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Garza. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries by voice vote. Is there a motion to approve the appointment of a sergeant to this meeting? Motion made by Alderman Garza, second by Alderman Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries by voice vote. I believe we are going to be led by the pledge by our veterans we have here in the room with us today. So from AVAC, Aurora Veterans Advisory Council, so we'll go ahead and stand up and I'll let you guys, gentlemen, lead the pledge, ladies and gentlemen, lead the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Alderman Bug will lead us today in invocation.
Power our heads. By the God, we thank you for this day. We thank you and ask you for wisdom, for insight, for discerning, to do the work of the people of Aurora so that we can meet the needs of our residents. We ask you to bless our businesses and bless our residents during this holiday season. We ask you and thank you for our first responders. We pray for them, our fire, police, and our armed forces. Bless them and keep them. We pray out this name of your son. Amen.
Amen.
All right, we have a short presentation this evening. Mr. Mahama.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. We're honored to be joined by a number of our veterans here with the Aurora Veterans Advisory Council. We always say that our Aurora veterans, we thank them for their service to our country and their continued service to our community. Not only do they go out and protect our liberties and freedoms, they come back home and continue to serve. And the Aurora Veterans Advisory Council certainly sets the standard for that. Not only do they help other veterans, they help other community organizations that help veterans as well. So tonight, we have a special presentation on behalf of AVAC to show just that. Our chairman, Josh Pfeifer, is here to explain more. Josh?
I guess I don't know which way to go. So for many years now, since I've been on the council, Aurora Veterans Advisory Council and Rebuilding Together Aurora have worked together on various projects. And Heather, a little while ago, came to us and requested some funding for veterans in need. I believe it was four houses. And we went to our meeting and they had asked for $5,000 to help them out. Well, through local businesses that, Scientel Solutions, Holiday Casino being another one, with their kind fundraising efforts, we're actually be able to go above and beyond that. So tonight, we're here with a check to present Rebuilding Together Aurora, $14,000 for the four veterans home builds in the city of Aurora. So we didn't build together Aurora, come up, and AVAC, please come up because this is a team that makes it happen right here.
Give another round of applause to our veterans giving back, helping out. Thank you. All right, England this way, everyone. Being able to serve veterans through Rebuilding Together Aurora, another round of applause. Thank you to AVAC and all of our business sponsors.
All right, let's go on. Let's go on for the rest of the agenda. Let's go on to public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to offer public comment?
We do, Mr. Mayor.
And before we go on, Council, do you want to explain the difference between all the different comments, public comments that will be going on this evening?
Hey, Mr. Mayor.
Your mic is a number.
It should be enough. As part of every city council meeting we operate, period, up to half hour of public comments in three minute increments. This is for general public comment on any items that may be coming before at least the council. With this particular meeting, we do have two public hearings, which will be conducted after public comment. So if you are intending to give public testimony as part of the public hearings in the district, that would be a time to do that. The public comment, though, that would be getting into a generalized public comment that's happening at all meetings.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, you read the rules for public comment.
Pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, all persons shall be permitted an opportunity to address public officials under the rules established and recorded by the council. Under our rules, any person may address the city council for up to three minutes, with a maximum of 30 minutes allotted for all public comment. No person other than the timekeeper or the chair for the purpose of maintaining order may interrupt a person recognized for public comment during his or her comments. Members of the city council shall not engage with nor respond to a speaker during the time set aside for public comment. Staff is directed to follow up with members of the public with respect to any concerns raised during public comment within the scope of the city's authority following the adjournment of this meeting.
Will you call the first speaker wishing to offer public comment tonight?
Marjorie Logman.
Ms. Logman, you have three minutes. Excuse me, hold on a second. We'll make sure Ms. Logman has a microphone so she can speak. Ms. Logman, you have three minutes to speak beginning now.
Thank you very much. I haven't been in front of the council in a long time. I've spent a lot of time traveling through the city and experienced a great loss of innocence. I saw a continuing change from some of City Hall through some organizations to power, fame, and pleasure, slash for deals over serving people. If not operating in this, complacency in getting along, to get along is often the rule. My own wanting to be in the limelight, in the know, and receiving plaques conflicted with these values I cherish and has kept me away. This along with shunning for pointing out possible wrongdoing is not easy to cope with. I would enjoy having a conversation with my very Republican grandfather and dad about how today, instead of perseverance and hard work, businesses can now be government subsidized. They would shake their heads. I think of the song "I Owe My Soul" to the company store and the old time mob protection fees. I find very often the city council hears but does not listen and understand what the populace is saying. Yielding to their followers and own desires leaves many citizens behind. The new casino is one of these issues. Make Aurora famous and popular over quality of life. The group who has presented the pitfalls of supporting the TIFs have done good research and found that it does support pleasure and enrich the already rich and leave the rest behind. School suburbs residents inconvenience along with much needed service curtailed. Please, instead of closing your minds, listen to the people and vote no to casino TIFs. The population decline here in Seville is due to the atmosphere here in Aurora now. Who is leaving is the smart, emotionally and socially intelligent who want quality of life over pleasure. I still come into the city to work on things and visit those who nourish me and are trying their best to live a quality of life with caring values, not succumbing to the current power and fame atmosphere. Thank you very much.
Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
George Gutierrez.
Mr. Gutierrez, you have three minutes to speak beginning now.
All right. My name is George Gutierrez. I'm also known in the community by Chicano. I run a business and an organization called Chicano Times. I also run a town boxing club where we train kids from eight to 18 to help keep them off the streets. I'm here today because I was attempting to do an event. As a lot of people well know that I do a lot of events throughout the city of Aurora downtown and, you know, east side, west side. I was attempting to do a Day of the Dead event, which is a part of our Mexican culture, November 3rd, our first Fridays. However, I received a lot of friction with that and I wasn't allowed to do the event downtown. I've done this event a number of years already here downtown. Three years in a row today, this year would have been the fourth. I was contacted by Special Events for the City of Aurora, inquiring into whether I was going to be selling alcohol or giving alcohol at my event. I explained to them we weren't. I explained to them the misunderstanding they had and that I understood why they thought that. However, at the same time, I was being contacted by Fifth Third Bank, the property where we were going to have the event. And I was told by them that the city had contacted corporate, contacted them, and told them not to allow us to have the event. I also was told by them that APD, approximately six members of the Aurora Police Department, went into the bank office and told them not to allow us to have an event because I do a lot of illegal events and I will attract a large crowd. I was told by the branch manager that they felt intimidated because of the number of officers that came in. So I wasn't allowed to do the event there. We moved it to another location. The next day, I was never told by the city of Aurora that I could not have my event. I just didn't do it there because the bank withdrew their permission. I then went to another location on the east side. We started the event there the next day. And I was approached by four officers of Aurora Police Department telling me I could not have my event because I did not have a permit. We explained to them that we were never turned down for our event, that we were allowed to do it, we just couldn't do it at that location. Then they changed to where we did not, they received a noise complaint. So a number of, you know, circumstances occurred. We were not allowed to do the event there. So then that happened. I also run a town boxing club, as I stated. We attempted, we focused our attentions on another event, which we had this past weekend at La Sierra on East New York Street. I was called by the owner of that establishment and I was told by him that APD was there and they told him that they would take his license if he allowed me to do an event there. At the time, the officer was there, Officer Whitfield was there. We communicated with him on the phone and he told us the same thing, that we could not have our event there because we do illegal events. He attempted to intimidate this owner as far as that, you know, having this event there. We had numerous people contact APD, contact city officials about this. And then they backtracked and then, you know...
Thank you, sir. Your three minutes is up. Madam Clerk, call the next speaker.
Brian Dahl.
Mr. Dahl, you have three minutes to speak beginning now.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. For the record, I am Brian Dahl. I serve as president of Fox Valley Building and Construction Trades Council here in Aurora. I come before you once again on behalf of affiliate to the Fox Valley Building Trades and some of them are in attendance today in support of the proposed TIF district for the new casino property. Creating this TIF for the casino is an instrumental piece for the development of huge new asset to the community that will be located at one of the gateways into the city. This project will be one of the bigger developments that the city has seen in a few years that will provide immediate and future returns on investment to the taxpayers of Aurora as well as the taxing bodies that reside within the TIF district. We look forward to the hundreds of construction jobs that this project will create. And once built, all the full-time jobs that will be needed, the revenue that will be generated and the increased value this property will now bring will provide returns on its investments. We ask for support for the TIF district. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, you call the next speaker.
Pat Wyler.
Ms. Wyler, you have three minutes to speak beginning now. Go ahead, ma'am.
Oh, good. Hello, my name is Pat Wyler, resident of Aurora for 50-plus years. I know I don't look that old, but I am. I'm here to talk about the TIF district. Unfortunately, I'm not in support of it. First of all, it's based on one little tiny term called the blight. If you were out there over Thanksgiving weekend with the 30 extra police officers, you got to know that's not a blighted area on weekends. It's not a blighted area. I'm sorry. I think that basing this agreement on a false premise is wrong, unethical, and contrived, to say the least. The city has already purchased a lot of property to the tune of approximately $8 million, I believe, to prep for the casino and their needs along Biltor Road. How much more does this multimillion-dollar casino need? Is our input here tonight just a sham to legalize an already-done deal? And let's say, lastly, let's follow the trends. Downtown Aurora moves to Fox Valley. Fox Valley moves out here to the outlet mall. The casino moves from downtown. My point here is, like Copley, what's going to be left if the casino leaves? 27 years of decreased property values for the people around there and the businesses? What is the provision? Since it's probably going to go through, what's the provision for if they should fold and leave? Times are very difficult right now for so many people and for so many of your constituents. Please don't gamble with our finances, our schools, our libraries, our parks, our children, and our future. Leave the gambling to the casino. Deny the TIF. Thank you for your time.
Madam Clerk, you call the next speaker.
Sandy Schmidt.
Ms. Schmidt, you have three minutes to speak beginning now.
The new 2024 fiscal budget for the city of Aurora is approximately a half a billion dollars. According to some staggering facts I found on the Illinois Comptroller's website, provided by the CFO, Chris Minnick, in 2021 and 2022, the city of Aurora's liability total was about $850 million. Yet our new budget is about $560 million. So where is this money coming from? In September of 2023, this September, Mayor Irvin sent out a flyer boasting that our city's equalized assessed value was a billion dollars. So I just want to know, how do we have an assessed value of a billion dollars if we have liabilities of $850 million? So to be clear, I'm saying we're talking billions. We're not talking millions of dollars. This is a lot of money. And it's affecting the people who are trying to put food on their tables. It's affecting you. It's affecting your neighbors. To top it off, the flyer that Mayor Irvin sent out in September with the misleading assessed value cost, the taxpayers, it costs us $30,000. It costs $30,000 to send out that flyer. So there's another kind of, to me, insult to injury that he's putting that out there and is costing part of my tax dollars to put that out there.
Call the next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Brian Hooker.
So you have three minutes to speak beginning now.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Brian Hooker with Carpenter's Local 174. And I'm here tonight supporting the proposed TIF district for the casino. This mega project will bring hundreds of construction jobs and full-time jobs for the community. The project will bring in much more outside revenue and tourism in its new location and lead to future development in the area. With this, I ask for your support tonight. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, call the next speaker.
Steve Hendry.
Mr. Hendry, you have three minutes to speak beginning now.
Good evening, all. I also wanted to speak to the budget. Our fine policemen, what I saw on there, I found disturbing about their being overworked. Maybe they want the overwork. Patrolmen making about $100,000 a year and getting $55,000 more in overtime. That's a lot of overtime. We're hiring seven new officers. I think you need to hire a lot more than that. That may not fit the formula, being that the population is down, what, $15,000 or so? But maybe the new intern that is in will be able to find all those people and have them register again. But I think that's something that needs to be looked at. It's beyond that for this budget. It was already passed. But it just doesn't seem right that as many people as I saw listed they're making over $100,000 and then taking another $55,000 in overtime. If they need that money, then maybe they don't have such a good contract. $100,000 sounds like a lot, but $100,000 isn't really worth somebody's life. And that's what they put on the line every day. I can appreciate that. My other comment or thought was, a lot of the tradespeople I hear, they're really backing this up. But they should know that the average person working at the casino is making maybe $30,000 a year. That's far less than you guys all earn and your jobs are going to be gone in 2025 when it's done. Hopefully, there'll be more for you to do after that. Hopefully, it won't cost us more TIFs, though. The other, my other question was, or not question, but a statement that the... This is a monopoly game with the TIFs. But Mr. Moneybags, Penn Entertainment, still has a cash on hand of over $1.4 billion. They don't need a coupon from the citizens of Aurora. Thank you.
Do you have any additional speakers, Madam Clerk?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Let's go on to the next portion of our agenda, public hearing. Madam Clerk, were you the first item under public hearing?
23-0999, public hearing regarding the proposed first amendment to the existing West Farnsworth TIF District Number 7.
I call to order the public hearing on the proposed first amendment to the existing West Farnsworth TIF District Number 7. This hearing is held as required by Section 5A of the Illinois Tax Increment Allocation Redevelopment Act. Notice that the hearing was mailed and published in the newspaper as required by law. The purpose of this hearing is for the city council to consider a first amendment to the TIF district to remove properties from it to allow the TIF district to remove properties from, uh, it to allow for the creation of the proposed Farnsworth Bilter TIF District, and for the public to offer comment to the city council about the amendment to the TIF district. This public hearing is not about the proposed new Farnsworth Bilter TIF District. If you want to offer comment about that TIF district, please wait and do so during the next public hearing. The public hearing will start with a presentation by the city staff and consultants, then move on to the description of the joint review board's review of the proposed amendment, then public comments, then questions and comments from the city council. And finally, we will close the hearing. Before city staff and consultants, um, give their presentation, I want to spend a moment reviewing the extensive public notices and transparencies followed by the city in getting to this point in amending the TIF district. In September 2023, the city published a newspaper notice announcing the proposed amendment. That month, the proposed amendment was introduced to the Finance Committee, the Committee of the Whole, and the city council. All three of these introductions occurred on publicly posted agendas. In September and October, the Finance Committee, Committee of the Whole and City Council considered and the council approved an ordinance directing the amendment of the vetted, be, directed that the minute, amendment be vetted by the Joint Review Board and a public hearing. Again, the ordinance was listed on all three public, publicly posted agendas. In October, the Finance Committee, Committee of the Whole and the City Council considered and the council approved an intergovernmental agreement with Batavia Public School District Number 101 regarding the amendment. The school district also approved the agreement because it supports the amendment and the new TIF district. In October, city staff mailed TIF district notices to all affected taxing districts, the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity, to all residents, addresses within seven hundred and fifty feet of the boundaries of the TIF district, and all parties on the city's TIF Interested Party Registry. In November, the Joint Review Board held its meeting and unanimously recommended the amendment be approved. City staff will give more details on that recommendation later in the hearing. In November, city staff published notices of the public hearing and mailed notices to all taxpayers within the TIF district and to all parties on the TIF Interested Parties Registry. In November and December, this public hearing was on Finance Committee and Committee of the Whole agendas, which were publicly posted. With that background on the record, I ask city staff and its consultants to now give the city and city council an overview of the proposed amendment to the TIF district. The city council and the public should hold their comments until later in the hearing when they will have an opportunity to speak. Mr. Dick?
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Go ahead, go ahead. You can take a question in a second. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mayor. City Council Trevor Dick, Assistant Director in the Mayor's Office of Economic Development. I wanted to introduce you Charles Durham from Ryan &amp; Company, who will give a brief presentation.
Thank you very much, Trevor. Tonight, we're talking about, um, First Amendment to the West Farnsworth TIF District. The purpose of the TIF district is, first of all, I should mention that the original TIF was adopted in 2011, uh, November and December. Um, in 2023, earlier this year, a formal decision was made to start a procedure to remove certain parcels from the TIF district, also known as TIF District Number Seven, for the purpose of formulating those parcels into a new TIF district. The, uh, proposed TIF District Number Seven, in terms of the remaining parcels will remain in place and run through the, uh, entire term of the TIF district. There will be no additional changes to the TIF district other than removal of the parcels for the purposes of creating a new TIF. Uh, up on the screen is a list of the parcels. There were eight parcels in total. Uh, you see there the PIN numbers for 2022. It's important to note that some of the parcels are in transition. There have been new PIN numbers assigned to them in 2023, so that by 2023, uh, the TIF would be adopted with tax in 2022 regardless of the change, and the base, uh, EAV for the new TIF, as I'll explain, in the next public hearing will be based on 2022, not Up before you is a map of, uh, TIF District Number Seven, all in purple. The red area to the northeast of the TIF district, those are the parcels that are gonna be removed from TIF Number Seven and will in part formulate the new TIF district. Uh, that's pretty much all the comments I have for this TIF district.
Thank you very much, sir. And I ask city staff to provide the city council with information about the joint review board proceedings.
Thank you, Mayor. As part of the process of amending the TIF district, a joint review board meeting was held on November eighth, 2023. Part of the meeting, notice was posted both at City Hall and at the Development Services Building where the meeting was held, and notice of the meeting was mailed as required by law. Members of the joint review board, our representatives from certain taxing districts, were impacted by the TIF district. At the conclusion of the meeting, on November eighth, the JRB unanimously recommended that the city council amend the TIF District Number Seven with a vote of seven in favor and zero against. Votes in favor of amending the TIF district were cast by the City of Aurora, Kane County, Wabonzie Community College District 516, Batavia Unified Public School District 101, Fox Valley Park District, Aurora Public Library District, and a public member. Votes in favor by these taxing districts means that each found that the amendment meets the requirements of the TIF Act and that it would be appropriate for the city to amend the TIF district. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. It's time to move to the public comment regarding the proposed amendment. Any written comments regarding the amendment were distributed to the city council. If members of the public wish to comment tonight, you will have an opportunity to speak to city council. This first public comment period only relates to the proposed amendment to the existing TIF district. This is not a time to comment on the proposal, uh, to the new created TIF district. If you wanna speak about the new TIF district, please wait until the public comment period for that. This council and staff will listen and will not be answering questions or engaging in back and forth with the public. If a speaker agrees with previous comments, please simply tell us that you agree with this speaker instead of repeating their comments. When it's your turn, please come to the podium, state your name, and make your comments. Please limit your comments to a reasonable, uh, reasonably brief period of time, uh, no longer than a, a few minutes, so that everyone here who wishes to speak will have the opportunity to do so. All right, we will go on to the public comment. Um, go ahead. Madam Clerk, call the first speaker wishing to offer public comment.
Mary Lee Lou.
Mary Lee Lou? All right.
I cannot read the next, um, signature.
Ted, some, one name that starts with a T that signed it on, can't read that next name. Or the one after that.
Yeah, the one after that, I'm unable to read either.
Last name, first Chris, starts with a T, last name starts with a T. Is there a Chris? Wind off the public comment. All right, is there anyone in the overflow room this evening? That may be one of those two individuals that signed up for the first list? I see you have your hand up, ma'am, and normally we don't call and pull from the, in the public, but I'm gonna ask, is, was your, just in case we didn't read these-
I wasn't either of those.
You weren't either of those people? Okay. No one in the, no one in the, uh, overflow room? So that concludes the public speaking for that particular. We will now move on to the question, comments from the city council. Alderman, you have the floor. Alderman Lesh, uh, you had a, you had data, something you wanted to say.
Sure, it's just a quick question on procedure and perhaps applies to the next, but I'm just curious if there's any members of the council who, uh, might be seeking contracts with the casino or have family members that are seeking contracts who might like to recuse themselves from this proceeding?
All right, so let's go on to the next question. All right, so no city council members have any question on this particular item that deals with the changing of the TIF? All right? Before, city staff have any more to offer other than what you offered initially? All right, having heard from the public and the city council, our entertaining motion to close the public hearing-
Motion to close public hearing.
Second motion, there's been a motion made by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Franco. That hearing is adjourned. All right, so I'm, I'm sorry, let's call, let's call a roll on that meeting before we adjourn it. Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Danal?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bog?
Yes.
Yes!
Sorry. Alderwoman Bates?
Sorry, yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Eleven, twelve yes, zero no.
All right, that hearing is adjourned. All right? Now, the clerk, please read the title of the next public hearing item.
Twenty-three dash one zero zero zero, public hearing regarding the proposed Farnsworth Bilter TIF District.
I call to order the public hearing on the proposed Farnsworth Bilter TIF district. This hearing is held as required by Section 5A of the Illinois Tax Increment Allocation Redevelopment Act. Notice that the hearing was mailed and published in the newspaper as required by law. The purpose of the hearing is for the city council to consider creation of the TIF district and for the public to offer comment to the city council about the creation of the TIF district. Before the city staff, consultants, I'm sorry, before the city staff and consultants begin their presentation, I want to spend a moment reviewing the extensive, uh, public notices and transparencies followed by the city in getting to the point of this TIF district hearing. In September 2023, the city published a newspaper notice announcing the proposed TIF district. That month, the proposed TIF district, uh, was introduced to the Finance Committee, the Committee of the Whole, and the city council. All three of those introductions occurred on publicly posted agendas. In September and October, the Finance Committee, Committee of the Whole, and City Council considered and the council approved an ordinance directing that the TIF district proposal be vetted by the Joint Review Board and a public hearing. Again, that ordinance was listed on all three publicly posted agendas. In October, the Finance Committee, Committee of the Whole, and City Council considered and the council then approved an intergovernmental agreement with Batavia Public School District 101 regarding the TIF district. As with all other TIF district items, this was on a publicly posted agenda. The school district also approved the agreement because it support, supports the new TIF district. In October, city staff mailed TIF district notices to all affected tax, taxing districts, the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity, to all residential, all residential addresses within seven hundred and fifty feet of the boundaries of the TIF district, and all parties on the city's TIF Interested Party Registry. In November, the Joint Review Board held its meeting and recommended the TIF district be approved. City staff will give more details on the recommendation later in the hearing. In November, city staff published notices of the public hearing and mailed notices to all taxpayers within the TIF district and to all parties on the TIF Interested Party Registry. In November and December, this public hearing was on Finance Committee and Committee of the Whole, which were publicly posted. With that background on the record, I ask city staff and its consultants to now give the city council an overview of the proposed TIF district. City council and public should hold their comments until later in the hearing when they will have an opportunity to speak. Sir?
Uh, hello again, Chuck Durham from Ryan, LLC. We are the TIF consultants for the city of Aurora. Just wanna give a really brief presentation on the artwork related to the TIF district. What we did on behalf of the city, we prepared the TIF plan, and we also conducted the TIF qualification report on behalf of the city. What I'd like to do tonight is to quickly go through our four items. The first would be, uh, related to the TIF plan and the objectives. Second, I'd talk, like to talk briefly about the qualification factors that we use in qualifying or recommending the qualification of the property to the city council. Third, I just wanna talk about a few items in the TIF plan itself, and finally, just to, uh, review the next steps with respect to the TIF adoption process. First, I would like to talk a little bit about the plan and objectives. Should mention right from the outset that the, the land that was subject of the redevelopment project area as proposed, basically has two parts. One is improved, the other is vacant. That's very important with respect to how we approach the qualifications of the, uh, property, as we will talk about in a few minutes. The, uh, what we found was there are conditions in place that, that does constrain successful efforts by the city to redevelop the property. We think that the TIF district will, uh, assist the city in removing some of the impairments to the area's growth. The proposed TIF district is, or has been characterized by former commercial, uh, uh, properties that are, for the most part, vacant now. Most of the operations were in the process of cease-in operation or have ceased operations. The vacant structures and the parcels present, uh, interfere with the city's strategic plans for the redevelopment of the Farnsworth Quarter. Therefore, that's, uh, supporting of the TIF district designation. The existing TIF District Number Seven, uh, will have certain properties that will be removed from that, uh, TIF district as we just, uh, talked about in the previous public hearing. Those parcels, eight of them in part, will be combined with two more parcels that will form the new TIF district. We see this, uh, TIF district as an important opportunity for the city to move ahead with a large-scale project. Without the TIF district, in our judgment, uh, the project would not be financially feasible. With respect to, uh, some of the projects, uh, plans and objectives, obviously, it's important that the village approach the property to, uh, create more productive uses for the vacant property there and unutilized properties there. The, uh, implementation of TIF district will eliminate certain, uh, impediments that are in the way now that interfere with the city's efforts to redevelop the property. The coordination of activities there will help the city gather these, this, uh, TIF project in combination with this other economic development programs to send out a, uh, positive market signal to private sectors, not only to invest in this property, but in the city as a whole. Furthermore, this, uh, TIF district will go a long way in helping the city, uh, continue to meet its overall goals and objectives related to its comprehensive plan. This is a copy of the map that we showed in the first public hearing. Again, it is a map that primarily shows TIF seven. The purple area is TIF seven. The red area to the northeast will be the new TIF district. There are two parcels that are at the extreme north of the area that's not in TIF seven, but those two parcels will be brought into the new TIF as well. Uh, it's important to note that, in our opinion, the, uh, TIF area does qualify. It meets all the requirements of the Act. It is consistent and in conformance with the city's comprehensive plan. The size of the TIF first, TIF district is in excess of one and a half acres as required by the TIF Act. The, uh, proposed TIF district has within it, uh, factors, qualification factors, that are more than the minimum needed to, for qualification of the land, both in terms of vacant property and, and improved property. Also, in our opinion, uh, we feel that the area does meet the but four and that without the TIF, the city would not be able to proceed successfully with the project that's being contemplated. You can't see this very well, but this is a, uh, chart. Uh, I, I should backtrack by saying, all of this information is detailed in our TIF plan and our TIF qualification report that is on file with the city, uh, so a better view of this information can be gained from that. Additionally, uh, our office can always be contacted for more information about how we approach the qualifications, but, uh, even though you can't see it very well, this chart is in, basically in two parts. The first part relates to the improved property within the TIF district. Uh, the reason that's important is because under the TIF Act, there are different standards for qualifying vacant versus improved property. With respect to, for the improved property, uh, there were three parcels within the TIF district that had buildings on them. Those constitute what we call the improved properties. Uh, under the TIF Act, there's a couple of different ways you can qualify improved properties. One way, which most people are familiar with, is to find that the area is blighted, but there's also a second way. There's a standard under the TIF Act for improved properties called conservation area. A conservation area, uh, while not quite blighted, has tendency that will threaten to become blighted if not interfered with by economic development programs from the city. In this case, um, should mention that the other criteria for finding conservation area is there are thirteen factors laid out in the TIF Act, which define, uh, different ways you can qualify tax and financing districts. With a conservation area, you need three, um, criteria out of the thirteen- With a conservation area, you need three criteria out of the 13, as long as you have 50% of the structures in the, in the improved properties that are over 35 years of age. And we have that condition with this Tiff. So, as we examined the property, you need three out of six, three out of 13 to meet the conservation area. We were able to identify six factors. So, we think that the area more than qualifies for conservation area. The second thing I'd like to talk about is the vacant property. In the Tiff District, there's about six parcels that were vacant. Those vacant parcels do have factors that, if you look under the Tiff Act, under the various definitions, do qualify them for blighted vacant. There are a number of ways to qualify property under the Tiff District for blighted vacant. We found at least three ways to approach that. However, the one that was most prominent that we approached is a factor that's called blighted before becoming vacant. In other words, this is a factor that looks at the property, allows us to examine the data, working with the city, to come up with information to demonstrate that before the buildings were demolished, they had been there, that being primarily the motel as well, as well as a car dealership that's been gone for quite, quite a few years, that those properties were blighted before they were demolished. Our examination, with that respected at, was that the condition was met. Under the blighted standard, in this case, the Tiff Act allows you to look at those same 13 factors. You have to identify at least five factors out of the 13 in order to qualify the area for blighted. In this case, we identified seven factors. So, again, we more than, more than met the threshold of the factor. There's a couple of other factors that we examined. Again, those are well laid out in our qualification report. I'll be glad to go back through that if there's question about that. But the important thing is that any of the three approaches we took, in and by themselves, would be sufficient to qualify the area for a Tiff District. So, it's not a matter of having to approve all three. Any one of the three does the job. With respect to our work, I would like to highlight a couple of the key factors that we did identify. One of the key factors we found with the Tiff District was a lag in EAV, and we found that to the extent necessary under the Tiff Act to make that finding. Additionally, we found inadequate utilities with the help of city engineering and public works department. There are conditions that are inadequate with respect to water storm, sewer sanitation system systems, as well as elements of overhead electrical and lack of fiber optic infrastructure. The lack or insufficiency of those type of elements within an area is sufficient to make this finding. Additionally, this one was fairly obvious. There were three buildings within the Tiff District. All three of those buildings are vacant. That allows us to make a finding that there's excessive vacancies present within the Tiff District. Another finding that's important when you look at an area like this is one called lack of community planning. That goes back to looking back in time and understanding how an area developed or was allowed to develop and whether or not it met standards in terms of development by virtue of what we would consider modern today's standards for development. In this case, most of the structures that had been there were erected in the 60s and 70s. They were erected under a 1950s comprehensive plan, and that plan directed that the plan be Zone M1. The actual planning guidance back at that time supported that. However, the actual development that took place was commercial and retail. So, contrary to whatever the plans were when the original plan was developed, different types of land uses developed, contrary to the intent. However, by 1984, with the update for the comprehensive plan, that comprehensive plan brought up-to-date the uses that were present historically on the site, primarily commercial and industrial, I'm sorry, commercial and retail. Also, it's important to mention that the comprehensive plan is in conformance with the planned development, which would go there, which we are recommending as commercial mixed use. Finally, another fact I'd like to talk about a little bit is one that's called deleterious land use and layout. I won't drill on about this. The most important thing with respect to this factor is if you can make out the diagram there, you can see the irregular shape and size of this site. It's not a site that is primed for easy, inexpensive development. Because of the shape and the layout of the site, that's a deleterious condition that would have to be overcome by the city and any developer that's seeking to redevelop the property. Because of the shape of this property, the fact that there's a couple of landlocked sites within it, some of the problems with the past uses that were on the site, that permitted us to recommend to the city that this area suffers from deleterious land use and layout. Next, I'd like to briefly talk about some high points from the Tiff Plan itself, which, again, is on file in the clerk's office. First and foremost, with respect to the use, land uses on the site, the original land uses or existing land uses are basically vacant and vacant buildings that are unproductive. The proposed land uses will be commercial mixed uses for the site. The base CAV, if the city goes ahead and institute the Tiff District, would be approximately $528,500. That's based on 2022 tax data for all of the parcels proposed to be in the Tiff District. Upon completion of the Tiff District, Ryan is projecting that the Tiff will have a value of 75 million. That is at the end of the Tiff, which has a 23-year life. Finally, with respect to the process after this public hearing, you're going to hear about the Joint Review Board from city staff. So, that was part of the process. Part of the process is this public hearing. The next steps will be for ordinances to be presented to the City Council in two sets. The first set will recommend to the city that those eight parcels that we talked about earlier be removed from Tiff Seven for the purpose of placing those eight parcels, along with two other parcels, into a new area that will become the Farnsworth-Bilter-Tiff District if the City Council approves it. The next set of ordinance would make the Tiff District created. Thank you, Mayor, City Council.
Thank you, sir. And now, we'll ask city staff to provide the City Council with information about the Joint Review Board proceedings.
Thank you very much, Charles, and thank you, Mayor. Once again, Trevor Dick, Assistant Director and Mayor's Office of Economic Development. As part of the process of creating the Tiff District, a JRB meeting was held on November 8th, 2023. Prior to the meeting, notice was posted both at City Hall and the Development Services Building where the meeting was held, and notice the meeting was mailed as required by law. Members of the Joint Review Board are representatives from certain taxing districts impacted by the Tiff District. At the conclusion of the meeting on November 8th, the JRB recommended that the City Council create the Tiff District with a vote of six in favor and one against. Votes in favor of creating the Tiff District were cast by the City of Aurora, Wilbonzie Community College District 516, Batavia Unified School District 101, Fox Valley Park District, Aurora Public Library District, and the public member. The one vote not in favor was cast by King County. Earlier in this hearing, Chuck Durham explained why King County's reasons for its no vote were not valid. The votes in favor by the taxing districts means that each district that voted in support found the proposed Tiff District meets the requirements of the Tiff Act and that it would be appropriate for the city to create it. Thank you, Mayor.
It is time to move to the public comment regarding the proposed Tiff District. Any written comments regarding the Tiff District were distributed to the City Council. If members of the public wish to comment tonight, you will have an opportunity to speak to the City Council. The council staff will listen and will not be answering questions or engaging in back-and-forth with the public. If a speaker agrees with the previous comments, please simply tell us that you agree with the speaker instead of repeating their comments. When it's your turn, please come to the podium, state your name, and make your comments. Please limit your comments to a reasonably, reasonably brief period of time, no longer than a number of minutes, so that all who wish to speak have an opportunity to do so. We'll begin public comment now. Madam Clerk, you call the first person wishing to offer public comment.
Sandy Schmidt?
Hi, I'm Sandy Schmidt, precinct committee person, AU 29, Ward Number Five. You've heard that expression, "When something's too good to be true, it is." I feel that's the way it is with the Tiff, because it always seems to be 100% beneficial. If the numbers are so good, and if this is such a great thing for the city, then why doesn't somebody show me the numbers? I'd sit down if I knew that this was beneficial. We have the original Casino Tiff. Those reports are on record as of September. So, how about somebody publish that? We don't need videos, we don't need PowerPoints, we don't need building blocks. We're pretty intelligent people in this community. I think we just need to see the numbers. They're out there. As far as the King County Assessor, Mark Armstrong, he was the person that voted no. I've been in other JRBS with him. He doesn't always vote the way I want him to, but he comes prepared with information. And in this case, he did say several things which proved that in this, in this scenario, blight is not warranted. Now, I know you guys disagreed on that. However, the council members, I would say, reach out to Mark Armstrong. He has reasons, maybe if you didn't see the JRB meeting, I, I find them convincing. Again, he just seems like a guy that brings the facts, and that's what he goes with. So, that's why he voted no. The other thing is that this Tiff and the unions, they're not, they're not mutually exclusive. I'm pro-union. I'm definitely for a living wage. The casino is what's going to bring union jobs. The Tiff is a part of it, but that's not why the union is going to get jobs is because of the Tiff. It's the building of the casino. You can also, with a Tiff, it doesn't have to be all or nothing. It could be a 50-50 split. So, when you're talking a 23-year and the developer's getting the benefit upfront, if you do a 50-50 split, then that means the schools, your infrastructure, whatever, they can get some of the money to start with, and the developer can get some money to start with. So, that's an option as well. You don't have to do a 23-year Tiff. It could be a 15-year Tiff, which, again, would mean that the money doesn't go to the developer, and it's not out there for 23 years. The original Casino Tiff was 23 years and then was extended for another 12. So, again, that's 35 years. If it's beneficial, show me. Like, I will sit down. I just want to see the numbers. So, yeah, I guess before you vote, I would just ask that you ask for the numbers, ask for the reports, talk to Mark Armstrong. I'm not saying vote with me just because I'm against it. I'm just saying, let's find out some information, and, and perhaps a 50-50 split is better. Perhaps it's a no. But this does not impede the unions from getting a job because you vote no on the Tiff. That's what this is about, not about the casino. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, call the next speaker.
Helen Ratslow?
Helen Ratslow, Ward Three. I'm urging the council to vote no on the Farnsworth-Bilter-Tiff. This Tiff District doesn't meet the BUT four clause because the council's already heard how fabulously wealthy Penn Entertainment is. That free land you gave them, it's like a bag of potato chips in my, in my grocery bag. The $50 million bond is less than the chairman's $65 million annual pay. The Tiff, you still don't believe that Penn Entertainment doesn't need it? They spent around $500 million on Barstool Gaming System and then sold it back to the original owner for a dollar. That's more money than the estimate on the casino, how much the casino complex will cost. So, Penn can throw away hundreds of millions of dollars on Barstool, but for us, they need to starve the property tax base for two or maybe even three decades? Oh, and the $500,000 a year that the, that the seven taxing bodies are supposed to divvy up over? The Penn CEO makes that much money every 2.8 days. The council, no doubt, knows that the King County government is seriously considering a property tax hike. The other taxing bodies will probably do so as well. And John and Jane Q. Public will pick up the tab, as usual. I'm pretty sure when the council finally votes on the Tiff, most of you will vote yes, because this Machiavellian deal has been a done deal since the city bought the two hotels and destroyed the two hotels on Farnsworth. And those of you who worship the morbidly rich will move heaven and earth to help these pirates weasel out of their property tax obligation and at the same time roust poor people out of low-cost living arrangements, roust the desperately poor out of their tents and sleeping bags. And those of us in the middle who are neither desperately poor nor morbidly rich, you pretty much ignore us until it's time to pay the bills. So, consider this, ladies and gentlemen. 2025 and 2027 are in the rearview mirror, and they're closer than they appear.
Madam Clerk, call the next speaker.
Gautam Batia?
Good evening, City Council members. I'm opposed to the Tiff, and I urge you to consider that. What I wanted to point out, in addition to some of the information already shared, is how Tiffs, and there's an article in the Beacon News that came out on December 10th, that points out a few things that are really, I should say, educational on how Tiffs get impacted and how the school districts get impacted and left out of the tax revenue for their taxing body. So, a couple of quick things here. Won't repeat what has already been said. Really tough to follow, Helen and Sandy. So, just wanted to point out this thing. The article focuses on how the tax rates can go down, but property taxes will still go up. They talk about the inflationary EAV as the primary driver of increasing property taxes, but I wanted to use the fact that taxes are being, are going up to point out that Tiff Districts remove property taxes from our schools. Aurora now has two active Tiffs districts in District 204. When the Tiff District removes taxes from the school board's budget, someone has to make up those dollars in the District 204 budget. That someone is us, the taxpayer. Even though this Tiff is not in District 204, the one that we are discussing tonight, it still impacts those of us who are Aurora Library taxpayers and City of Aurora taxpayers. This Tiff removes money from all the taxing bodies and gives that money to Penn Entertainment. So, I urge you to oppose this Tiff District and put an end to the practice of raising taxes on the working families of Aurora to subsidize this multi-billion-dollar company. I will end with, in the spirit of the holiday season, and that is that I feel that Santa's sleigh this year actually has Penn Entertainment written on its side. So, thank you.
Call the next speaker.
Mary Lee Lu?
Good evening. My name is Mary Lee Lu. I'm an Aurora resident. I am here to basically second what Sandy Schmidt has stated and Helen, as well as JB. One of the things I'd like to point out is that this appears to actually be just a really heavy moving expense for this Tiff District. We're not going to gain any additional revenue. This is not development. This is moving. We're paying for their, their moving trucks. I am not against the development of other businesses, but giving this to Penn Entertainment for free does not seem fair to the residents. I'm pro-union. I would love the carpenters and the other developers to have the jobs and the positions of that, to keep that. That's fine. Find new revenue. Do a better job, council. Find something new to bring in additional revenue. This won't be additional. This is just moving the revenue someplace else with a huge price tag. That's the way it appears. I also want to let you know, you can change your mind. When you go and you order something, and then you sit there for a while and you decide, hmm, I'm not really feeling like a salad, I want a steak. You can change your mind. You don't have to do this. Thank you. Thank you.
Call the next speaker.
Steve Hendry.
Hi, me again. I wanted to go back to something as far as the whole thing with the casino moving. It started back when our mayor first came into office, which he was just, I'm going to get that casino out. He had the place all picked out already. We paid, we, the taxpayers, picked up the tab for lobbyists down in Springfield to get things changed. That's something he bragged about. It was nice to see Representatives Kiffewitt and Hernandez there take a bow. They helped out, they helped get the laws changed. But the comments from Mr. Mark Armstrong, he made it quite clear, and really took this gentleman by surprise with the facts that he had about how it didn't fit the bill. It didn't meet the requirements. And one of the things also that was part of that was the fact that there's already development there. Penn Entertainment's partner that owns the real estate and leases it to them to run the casinos on, bought parcels that are part of this TIF. They paid millions of dollars for them. And that kind of says that it's pretty well-developed. No-for-sale signs went for them. They bought it without for-sale signs. But all the others, the blight, those were the city's properties. They tore down the buildings. If the city didn't keep up the property and let it get blighted so they could get the TIF, it's just a big vicious circle that we get sucked into. The... I should have been more prepared. I'm sorry. I'm done.
Madam Clerk, call the next speaker.
The next speaker signed in as anonymous Aurora resident.
Sorry, I don't normally need assistance getting to the podium. I want to know who's paying for the road upkeep in the surrounding areas, or are we going to get stuck paying for that, too? And how much is Penn Entertainment? What is their portion of responsibility that they're going to pay for all these other things that are going to be additional costs that aren't being talked about? I also wanted to mention that if someone has a child right now when this is being built, they're not only going to be out of daycare, preschool, kindergarten, elementary school, but high school and college, and start having their families of their own and starting their own life before this TIF ends. And then there's also the possibility it will have an extension. So we could be talking even into 30 years. I also want to know, why are we taking money out of the budgets of our schools, our libraries, and our park districts, already strapped for cash as it is, and giving this multi-billion-dollar company a gift on the backs of the community? Because TIF really stands for the wealthiest people in these companies making a ton of money on the back of the residents. I really, truly beg of you, as each city council person, to dig deeper. Because, no offense, I know you're representing Ryan, and you're a very nice man. I met you before. But you're doing your job, but you can skew any poll or any terminology in order to be able to get the desired result, with a margin of error, even statistically speaking. So if you have a mission, and you're hell-bent to make this blighted, well, you can find a way to manipulate things so that you can cover your butt to make it blighted. It's not blighted. Why are we taking money from the students and the community members so we can make more people wealthy in this community? And I'm not taking anything away from tradespeople or anything. They're all entitled to make a good earning wage. That's not what this is about. I've learned by getting educated here recently when this came about that I will never approve another TIF, ever, if it comes up for a vote. And anyone who is supporting a TIF, they're screwing over the residents of our community. Shame on people who are doing that, because I don't think people here, sitting here, have really delved in to all the facts. I beg of you to dig deeper and ask more questions. And yes, the other lady who spoke, there's nothing that says people can't change their mind. The assessment for that property is basically a joke. And we're not seeing the transparency that really needs to be out there. With your proposal thing, I asked you this at the November 8th meeting. There's actually 10 parcels. And some of those, we're giving them because the city doesn't pay taxes on those parcels. So that means that that property's also not generating any taxes on it for now and in the future, either. So we're losing money on the property that should be generating taxes because we're giving them a big fat gift. I know you're talking about eight, but there's actually 10 there. I also want to know, it was a very nice, smooth transition, really glossing over this alderman-at-largest question. So I'm going to revisit it. Does any of you, now, in the future, or during this project, have any fiduciary relationship, any financial, personal gain, or any kind of affiliation with any organization, any contractors, anyone that's going to be doing business with this project? And if you do, are you going to recuse yourself? Because it's a big, fat conflict of interest. I'm a walking, talking billboard against this project, and when the next vote comes up for your positions, because I'm angry. We are getting screwed. It comes down to increasing our taxes, basically $2,000 per household in Aurora. Now, this bleeds over to some people in Batavia because of the school district. I was flabbergasted at the November 8th meeting that you had people representing their community constituents from the school districts, and the park district, and the libraries, who had the audacity to sit here and vote yes, to take money away from the people using those services. What is wrong with people? Where is the logic? We need to be getting more money for those so we can have intelligent people coming up through the ranks through our schools, not depleting them of more money. The teachers are already having to buy supplies out of their own pocket. We already have people that are struggling right now. There will be jobs in this and that, but is the trade-off really worth it? Because when you really get down to the brass tacks, it's a negative. We're actually losing money, and there's more to it than the direct cost. There's the indirect cost. We may not be able to stop the casino, but maybe we can stop the hemorrhaging while you're making these plans on how much they're going to be responsible, and not push it off on us to be able to give them a free gift in our community. I appreciate your time. I thank you very much, and I will go back to my seat.
Call the next speaker.
Susan Bachmeyer.
Not used to it. My name is Rachel Wassink, and this is Susan Bachmeyer. We're both residents of Aurora, and we work for World Relief Chicagoland. World Relief receives a grant from the City of Aurora called the Quality of Life Grant, and this grant comes from tax revenue from the casino. We're really thankful for this grant, because each year it helps sustain our children and youth program, which helps hundreds of children of immigrant families in Aurora each year through after-school clubs, tutoring, preschool parent-child playgroup, and connections to the many other resources in the City of Aurora. And we're able to do this work because of partners like the City of Aurora and funding from the Quality of Life Grant. Each year in Aurora, we serve about 200 kids in our children and youth program from the ages of zero to 18.
World Relief Aurora has been in the community since 1999. We are a nonprofit organization that have offices in the United States and outside the United States. World Relief serves refugees and immigrants from over 100 countries of origin each year through all of our programs. We have been present in the community since 1999, and we have resold this year through the Aurora office 209 refugees, and served over 1,000 people with social services in the Aurora area.
Call the next speaker.
Emma Eschenfeld.
Good evening. My name is Emma Eschenfeld. I work with Girl Scouts of Northern Illinois. We are also a recipient of a City of Aurora Quality of Life Grant. We were asked to speak briefly about what that funding supports with Girl Scouts. That supports our Project Opportunity Program, and has for a number of years. And through that program, we work with schools and in the community to provide the benefits of the Girl Scout leadership experience to girls in Aurora who might not otherwise have the opportunity to participate in extracurricular or leadership development programming like Girl Scouts. The funding allows us to offer the program at no cost to families, on average, more than 100 girls per year, including program supplies, uniforms, and trained facilitators to lead groups. That's particularly important, because we know that many families are not able to commit to, may not have the capacity to commit to volunteering to lead groups themselves. Girls in the program earn badges and topics ranging from STEM to financial literacy, healthy relationships, and more, and meet in locations in the community like schools, churches, and community centers that are easily accessible to families, so that transportation isn't a barrier for anyone to be able to attend a Girl Scout program. Through the City of Aurora Quality of Life programming, we have seen growth over the years, both in the size and the scope of the program, and we're appreciative of what that funding has allowed us to do for girls in the City of Aurora. Thank you.
Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Bob Gorski.
My name is Bob Gorski, and I'm with the Association for Individual Development, also known as AID. AID receives a grant from the City of Aurora for our Victim Services Program. Victim Services provides emotional support, case management, referrals, and other wraparound services to individuals who are a victim of crime or trauma. Services are free. Services are not limited to victims of crime or trauma. Individuals experiencing quality-of-life concerns, i.e. mental health crisis, domestic disturbances, neighbor disputes, displacement due to fire, may also receive services. These services are provided wherever needed, at the scene of the incident, at AID offices, or at another safe location. From January of 2023 to today, AID Victim Services has served 501 Aurora residents with about 1,500 service hours. Let me give you two examples of services that were provided. There was a grandmother who asked a case manager for assistance to obtain guardianship over her granddaughter when the mother of this child completed a suicide. Once that was completed, a few months later, the grandmother reached out to that case manager and asked for assistance in getting counseling services for both herself and for the granddaughter. And that counseling was successful. Another example is that there was a fire in Aurora in February that displaced two separate families, in total, six adults and a child. Their houses were deemed uninhabitable. This case manager worked with the adults to make sure that the housing needs were met and were able to connect them with other services, including the Salvation Army for short-term emergency funds. Thank you.
Someone signed up to speak that has the initial M. I don't know if this is anyone's signature that wants to speak. Other than this person, we have no individuals wishing to continue offering comment on this public comment. I'm sorry. Did you sign up? Did you sign the thing?
I signed something out of the table.
All right. I'm sorry. One second, one second. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Ma'am? Right up the... Yep.
Hi, my name is Linda Young, and I'm Executive Director of Shilling Association. And we have been working with Aurora area for several, started before pandemic. And we really serve the senior population here. And we have had, you know, mobile team program, and we serve the seniors' outreach to their resident place. We work with the senior buildings and low-income housing, and we help them to resolve their social needs. And we have workshops, we have all different kinds of things. And thank you for the new grant we are receiving from the City of Aurora, and we will be doing better work. And also, we are planning to have more programs developing in Aurora area and serving senior population. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Chris Lawson, resident of Aurora, Illinois. Before I get started, just wanted to mention that Abraham Lincoln once asked an audience, how many legs does a dog have if you count the tail as a leg? And when people responded, five, he responded, actually, it's still four. Just because you call something blighted, it doesn't mean it's blighted. So I serve as the current Kane County Treasurer, and I served for eight years as the elected county chairman. I'm very proud that Kane County voted no on this TIF district. It should be obvious that the answer is no on this. Mark Armstrong, as the lady mentioned, has written two books, two books on property taxes. He leads the effort in Springfield to write legislation on TIF. On TIF districts. So he is an eminent authority. He lectures all over the state of Illinois. Most importantly, I served my hometown of Aurora in the Illinois Senate for 20 years. For each of those 20 years, I served on the Senate Revenue Committee and participated in the most recent attempt to reform abuses to the TIF responsibilities, the TIF development tool, its legislative intent. So the point is, I know how TIFs work. I don't have to have it explained to me on the way up on the elevator. I am in favor of the jobs that come from the growth of any development, but not in giving away education and local government agencies $50 million. It goes from Aurora to Penn Entertainment, and then it gets paid back by TIFs on the installment plan. This is not a wise thing for us to do. Whatever the decision in the end, it's like the nuns over at Holy Angels when I was a little boy. They say, you know, Chris, this is going to go on your permanent record. And so that usually made me just a little bit more careful before I took a vote, or took an action. Mrs. Wieland, who is the first speaker, is correct, that this area is obviously not blighted. Penn Entertainment is a very wealthy company. I celebrate the creation of wealth. I think it's a very good thing. They don't need to be given our children's money, and the money that goes to libraries and other governments. I brought with me tonight a list from the Treasury records of the last 20 years of TIF, or excuse me, of property taxes that went into the TIF, the current TIF from Hollywood Casino. So that property produced $8.2 million over the last 20 years that you didn't receive. You know, the original was, as it's been mentioned here, was the first 23 years, plus 12 years, 35 years. And as soon as that expired, now it moves. I agree with the lady who says that this is a very expensive way of providing moving expenses for a successful corporation. My great-grandparents immigrated from Romania, and they have an expression in Romania that they shared with me in this community, where they say, you know, we have a very... a very rich country. Everyone comes here to steal from us. And I just don't want the City of Aurora to be taken advantage of, the people, the taxpayers, all of us to be taken advantage of. So this is not a good idea. Whatever the casino needs to do, whatever the city needs to do to support that, I understand. We really appreciate the jobs that are created, but to give them $50 million on the installment method through a TIF district is just wrong. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ma'am.
Good evening, everyone. I will have a vulnerable moment. This is the first time ever in my life to be in a room like this, and I've been struggling with a little bit or a lot of the jargon. So it's been hard, and I'm trying to figure out, and I'm a super smart person, so I'm taking notes, but I feel like there's a lot of information overload in my head at the moment. My name is Lydia Santa Panya, and I'm a resident of Aurora. We've met before. My child has been in the, what is it called, Boys to Men program, and I work for the YWCA Metropolitan Chicago. We service very low-income families in Aurora, about 242 families, and we are recipients of the Quality of Life Grant as well, like the other people that have spoken before me. In the last, I would say, three weeks, we have serviced about 19 families, and we have been able to support them by paying utility bills. And these utility bills, they're coming in red. Families are struggling to put money, food on the table, to pay their bills, to decide whether they're going to put gas in the car or they're going to buy a meal for their children. So this has been super helpful. We have supported three families in childcare copayments, car repairs, transportation is a, is a big deal, so we have been able to support that as well. I wanted to take the time and also read to you a thank you card from one of the recipients because I think it's important to feel the emotion that comes from the families that are grateful to receive those funds. This card says, "Thank you so much for giving me and my children a very needed helping hand. With holidays approaching, it was a very big surprise to be able to receive this. Better days are yet to come. Thank you once again." I'm going to read one more, and then I'll be done. I just wanted to thank you guys for donating a gift card to the Gonzalez family. Thank you to you, thanks to you guys. My family will be having light for Thanksgiving. The money has been, it's been used for electricity bill and phone bill. I really appreciate your kind help. Happy holidays. Thank you from the Gonzalez family. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, do you have any additional speakers?
We do not.
All right, let me just make a call to our room over there. Do we have anyone in the, in the room over there that wants to speak? No? And is there anyone in the council chambers currently that signed up and did not get their name called? Thank you. All right, let's go on. We'll move now, move on to questions and comments from the City Council. Alderman, is there anyone that would like to speak? Alderman Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it needs to be said, if it's not clear to many of you that are in the room, that without a casino, there are no quality of life programs. Without a casino, a lot of these programs go unfunded, so you need to think about that. One of the things I want to address is I listened to what people were saying, and I have listened intently, I've written notes, but a TIF, TIF money is never, ever, it was, excuse me, TIF money is never removed out of a school district's budget. That is untrue. That's what was said. TIF money is removed out of school district's budget, and a school is left to find that money elsewhere, insinuating the taxpayers were to pay the money. This is so not true because that money is not even in the budget because the TIF hasn't been created, and that is not how a TIF works. This is just a prime example of, of some of the untruths and unfortunate information that has been passed on to our residents that, that don't have a full understanding of the benefits of a TIF. And Mr. Mayor, that's all I wanted to share today.
Any other Alder? Alderman Lash?
First, I just want to thank the members of the public for the civility and presentation, either for or against the TIF. I did have a few things, I will send my comments to the clerk to be entered in official record as well as a letter from a Ward 1 resident and another document that I think was already spoken to. But I did want to make an official statement and be on the record. I believe that I was the only Alderman to attend a joint review board meeting held in November, so I wanted to share some of the comments that were made during the meeting with the rest of the council. During previous TIF discussions, a number of council members asked me to stop thinking for myself essentially and just trust the opinion of experts. Today, Mr. Durham is here, a paid expert. We're paying him to conduct the eligibility study. We've paid him to draft his report. We've paid him to build a case for blight, and we've paid him to find some language that satisfies the but-for clause. During the joint review board and other export, Mark Armstrong, the Kane County Supervisor of Assessments, carefully articulated the property is not blighted and that it does not satisfy the but-for clause. As Chief Assessment Officer for Kane County, Mark Armstrong is responsible for coordinating the countywide assessment process, equalizing assessments among the county's 16 townships, applying various tax exemptions, serving as the clerk of the Board of Review, chairing the County Farm Loan Assessment Review Committee. Mr. Armstrong is also a former member of the St. Charles Planning and Zoning Commission, and he's been in real estate and consulting since 1985. Given this resume, I hope my colleagues would agree that Mr. Armstrong is also an expert in real estate evaluation. He also sits on multiple joint review boards, not just here in Aurora but across Kane County. He's very familiar with TIF law. And I'm going to just summarize Mr. Armstrong's points. He did go through some of the points and counterpoints to the presentation that we received earlier, but at the end of it, I'll just surmise, during the joint review board, essentially, Mr. Armstrong made the point that the property is already being developed without the TIF. He pointed to $8.5 million that's been spent. The remainder of the property is all owned by the city, and that development is underway without the TIF. His exact words, "This is a site ready to go, and it's already happening. Development has happened within the last decade across the street, to the north of the property, to the northeast, and without a TIF, and to the south of the property." In short, Mr. Armstrong concluded that the but-for clause was not satisfied, and therefore Kane County voted no to recommend this tip to the council. I don't know the qualifications of the other members of that joint review board, but it definitely stood out that he knows what he's talking about. So we have an opinion from a paid expert, Mr. Durham, and we have exact opposing opinion from the Kane County Supervisor of Assessments, Mr. Armstrong. And I don't know that other council members are necessarily going to review those comments made by Mr. Armstrong, but I feel like a lot of this is just a charade in which the casino wins and the taxpayers lose. I'm going to make a few points of my own, just to get them on the record. Returning to the issue of self-inflicted blight, in this specific instance, a TIF district is not a barrier to development. The only barrier to development has been us, the City of Aurora. And the only blight is because the city has not maintained our own property. I would argue that both of these are intentional. One of the core requirements of a TIF is a determination that the but-for of the TIF, no development would occur. This is prime real estate off the Toll Road, I-88, has been owned by the city for several years. Prior to purchase by the city, the property had buildings with functioning businesses that the city demolished. The city purchased the property with the intention of encouraging the casino to move to the site. The city was never offered, has never offered the property for sale or done an RFP for development of the site. And given these facts, how can this site possibly meet the but-for clause? We haven't even tried. I want to make a second comment here, just so the rest of the council understands this with respect to misinformation. There are nine parcels in this property. Six of these parcels are owned by the city. And this matters because part of the narrative that we hear is that the base EAV will continue to generate taxes to the taxing bodies, but when the city buys the property, the property value drops to $0, and the taxing bodies get $0 of EAV. Now, for the three that Penn bought themselves, that base EAV will continue to go to the taxing bodies, but I hope the other members pay attention to this as the process goes forward because we typically do buy the property first and drop that base EAV down to $0, which is just funneling more money into the pockets of the developer. It's very much sweetheart deal. And then another talking point I wanted to counter is that this will somehow, it's been presented in past, this will create a windfall of tax revenue for the seven taxing bodies. The promise of a windfall was only dangled in the 1990s, when, when the casino first moved here, they dangled that in front of the East Aurora School Board, and when I served on that board for every year, all of the TIF districts, not just casino, removed roughly a million dollars from our budget, which did have to be make up, made up elsewhere. And then after the extension, just now, in 2022, at the expiration of TIF District 1, just now, after 30 years, District 131 started seeing tax revenue, and now that is going away as it moves into Batavia's School District. And the final thing, not just for this TIF, but going forward, as a, as a proud union carpenter, I would like to carefully articulate that a pro-labor position on this TIF would look like. Requiring a prevailing wage on construction alone is not enough. If we're to include a living wage clause specifying that the owner and operator of that property of $26 an hour or more indexed to inflation for each and every worker inside the casino, I would support this. Thank you.
Any other Alderman wish to offer comment? Alderman Yamas?
Thank you, Mayor. Wasn't sure if you could see my digital hand. So I wanted to address a couple of comments. I didn't quite understand why Alderman Lash and then someone in the audience was asking about potential conflicts of interest. As Alderman Lash knows, we have a process for dealing with conflicts of interest, legal conflicts of interest. If he thinks that anyone does have such an interest, I would recommend that you just come out and say it rather than just allude to it. If anyone here has a potential conflict of interest, it's going to be a union carpenter. As Lash just stated, this is going to bring a lot of work for the unions. You, as a union carpenter, might be working there, so you yourself might have that potential conflict of interest. Another point is Alderman Lash mentioned something about this not being a blighted area because prior to the city purchasing the, the properties across from the outlet mall, that there were functioning businesses there. Well, one of those businesses was a motel that was really, I won't say cover-up, but it was home to prostitutes and to pimps from Chicago that would beat, and I know this for a fact, at least beat one prostitute nearly to death, put her in the hospital. So is that really the, the kind of business that we're saying that was thriving here in this area, or was that blighted? That's all. Thank you.
Any other Alderman wish to offer public comment?
All right, then I will have Councilman Mr. Alexander, can you come into the council chambers, please?
So I'd like to address a couple of points that were brought up just to make, you know, clear to the audience and those folks that are listening at home and have any other questions. First, how many people are on the review, the joint review board? I know we talked about the one that voted against it. How many in total are on the board?
I believe tonight, Your Honor, that at the JRB, there were a total of seven taxing bodies represented. Six of them, six of the seven voted for the creation of the TIF.
Thank you very much. Also, we keep talking about but-for test, and but-for, the casino coming, talk about what would happen to those union jobs that folks say that they actually want to come to the city.
Well, Your Honor, the but-for really is pretty basic. But for this development, there is no tax increment created. So there seems to be some misinformation, and we have tried throughout this whole project to focus on data and evidence, not opinion, not a political view, simply data and evidence. And so the data and evidence clearly shows that but-for the casino deal, which was approved first in the RDA, so this has been a multi-step process. This is not something that we have taken lightly. This has come at great, with great study and much time, but had it been for the, you know, basically, as I had said back in November, we faced a choice, either the casino stays downtown or it ultimately moved. And in moving, that's a fact, if it moved, the city, and it's been mentioned tonight, we have been fortunate to gain over $300 million over the 30 years in gaming tax. From that gaming tax comes ward funds and quality of life grants. Those two significant funds in this community, and that was not something that I don't think anybody at this table, maybe Alderman Seville from his senior tenure with the city, that was decided years ago when the community decided to go after a gaming license. Instead of spending that money on brick and mortar or salaries or equipment, like other communities have with their casino, this community chose to invest it in its people and in the quality of life, and use the elected officials representing each ward to spend that money on the people in their ward. And so all of you receive ward funds from gaming, does not come out of property tax, does not hurt our taxpaying public. Those are extra benefits afforded to the residents of Aurora by the casino's existence. So if the casino ceased to exist, then we would potentially be facing decisions, not the staff. We would be asked to make recommendations, how are we going to fill that hole? Chris Minnick and Budget Team, how are you going to fill that hole of 900 to 1,000 to a million dollars a year that we give to qualified quality of life recipients, many of whom are here tonight? You see the direct impact. So that's a question. That is not something, and that's reality. That's not a hypothetical. In addition, all of you strategically spend your ward funds every year. For whom? For your residents, for the betterment of the City of Aurora. Are Aldermen at large? Get money, maybe not as much as I've heard you like, but that's up to you to decide those rules and how much, but we have data and evidence that will show, that does show that the new casino location will generate far more taxes, gaming taxes, that will then be fed into those two significant spending buckets. Gaming tax brings quality of life, and it brings ward funds.
And specifically, there was a comment made that this development deal and the casino relocating will raise taxes for the taxpayer, $20,000 per taxpayer per year. This affects the taxpayers at all.
Well, Your Honor, I've heard the number thrown around, 20,000 per resident, 120 million, 8 million that was paid out of this over the years. The bottom line is, right now, as those three properties sit there, they generate a very little amount of tax revenue. The deal that you all approved, the RDA, calls for a minimum property tax number of 5.25 million a year guaranteed by Penn Gaming.
What does that mean?
That means that roughly two years after the bonds are issued, the anticipated new property tax revenue is 5 and 1/4 million dollars. Currently, so again, these are, this is data and evidence from many folks who have Currently, so again, these are, this is data and evidence from many folks who have worked this deal for the past however many years we've been working on it, it seems pre-COVID and post-COVID. So currently, the parcels involved, the total property tax bill, which is administered by Kane County in a very responsible way, $48,656.98. That's a fact. Let me repeat that. Forty-eight, that's the 2021 tax bill, $48,656.98. The estimated property tax bill, as I stated, two years after the bonds will be issued, will go to $5.25 million. Now, the proposed agreement that was approved by six of the seven taxing bodies. So many of the comments, I believe, tonight and in the past, have said how this deal is taking money away from the schools, from the county, from all these entities, and yet, on their own accord, these entities voted for this. So not sure that any of us have that authority or persuasive power to convince independently-elected taxing bodies to vote for this deal. Now, is it, or is it not, a smart move to take a property from $48,000 a year total in property taxes to $5.25 million? Of that $5.25 million, 10% will be declared surplus that will be relayed to all of the taxing bodies. So the estimated, over the life of the TIF, that roughly equates to, just to the school district alone up there, $7.4 million. But every district, taxing district, will receive 10% of the $5.25 million over the life of the TIF. So money is going, and I think I heard someone say that development already occurred there. Development occurred across the street. So if you're talking about across the street as the Chicago Premium Outlet Mall, that did not occur BUT-4 a TIF, the most successful TIF, I believe, in Illinois history, if not in the United States. It didn't happen because of the market. It didn't happen because they decided randomly to select that location. It happened because of a TIF. And that TIF currently expired and is contributing millions. Chris Minnick, I'm not sure what that amount is, but all the taxing bodies are now fully benefiting from the Chicago Premium Outlet Mall. So it didn't happen. And just because development happened across the street doesn't negate the 13 factors that are used, not just one. So everyone is focusing on blight. But there are also, if you were paying attention to the data and evidence of the presentation, there are other factors involved, not just blight. But I've been with the city 23 years. The corner property at Bilter and Farnsworth, the last meaningful use that I've been told about anecdotally was a Cadillac dealer. It's been vacant since then. There's been no interest, there's been nothing that has developed organically there. And someone, rightfully so, praised the police. We have an amazing police department. Those two motels that were there, frankly, were an insult to the word motel. The number of police calls, crime that occurred there, and so we were faced with a decision to control our own destiny. And I believe I went, came before the public and the council, and with the council's consent, we purchased those properties. So when we're hearing the city fail to maintain those properties, we were never directed to spend taxpayers' dollars to keep up motels that were locations for drugs, prostitution, crime, right across from development. So the fact that development of such success occurred across from that was really amazing. So it's a testament to the city staff back then, and the mayor and the leadership at that time, that they were able to put a deal together to create that outlet mall, because that's one of the pillars of our economic revenue.
Thank you, sir. All right. So having heard from the public and the City Council, I would now entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Is it a motion by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Franco? No, no. At this point, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masseyakos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Alderman Bug?
Yes. She said yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
No, I still have one question.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
11 yes, one no.
All right, motion carries. The hearing is closed. All right, next, we will be reviewing the items under unfinished business first, and then we will move to the consent and direct to council consent portion of the agenda. Madam Clerk, I'm sorry, we're going to take that, all right. Will you please read the items under unfinished business?
23-0669, an ordinance levying taxes for the city of Aurora, Illinois, for the fiscal year January 1, 2023 through December 31, 2023.
All right. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Has been a motion made by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Franco. Are there any questions or discussions on that ordinance? If there are being none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masseyakos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Stayed.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
11 yes, one not voting.
Motion carries. This ordinance is adopted. Next, we will hear the both, the consent agenda and direct to council consent agenda in full. Will the clerk now please read both agendas in full?
23-0668, an ordinance authorizing and providing for the abatement of general obligation bond tax levies, 2023 tax levy extension. For the items on the consent agenda, items 23-0653 through item 23-0667, I will not read them in full, but I will read each special service area individually. First item is an ordinance levying certain special service area taxes for the fiscal year 2023 for special service area number one. Second is an ordinance levying certain special service area taxes for fiscal year 2023, special service area 44. Item 23-0657, an ordinance levying certain special service area taxes for fiscal year 2023, SSA number 63. 23-0658, an ordinance levying certain special service area taxes for the fiscal year 2023, SSA number 65. 23-0659, an ordinance levying certain special service area taxes for 2023, SSA number 66A. 23-0660, an ordinance levying certain special service area taxes for fiscal year 2023, SSA number 66B. 23-0661, an ordinance levying certain special service area taxes for the fiscal year 2023, SSA number 66C. 23-0662, an ordinance levying certain special service area taxes for fiscal year 2023, SSA number 66D. 23-0663, an ordinance levying certain special service area taxes for the fiscal year 2023, SSA number 67. 23-0664, an ordinance levying certain special service area taxes for fiscal year 2023, SSA number 88. 23-0665, an ordinance levying certain special service area taxes for fiscal year 2023, SSA number 90. 23-0666, an ordinance levying certain special area taxes for fiscal year 2023, SSA number 141. 23-0667, an ordinance levying certain special service area taxes for fiscal year 2023, SSA number 24. 23-1004, approval of the minutes of the Tuesday, December 5, 2023, special city council meeting.
Motion by Franco, second by Garza. Are there, before we consider those, a motion and second, are there any motions to remove any items, or any questions from any items on the consent agenda or direct to council consent agenda? There being none, a motion is second on the floor. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masseyakos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
12 yes, zero no.
The consent agenda and direct to council consent agenda are both approved. There is no new business for this evening, there are no reports. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to pay bills.
On this agenda, there has been a motion by Alderman Smith, second by, is that Alderman Garza?
Yes.
All right, Alderman Garza. Are there any questions or discussions on the bills? There being none, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masseyakos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
12 yes, zero no.
Motion carries. The bills are approved, no need for a close session.
Motion to adjourn.
I'm sorry, before we adjourn.
Can I ask Alvin Costo a question? I should know this, I've been in the council long enough. Options on voting is yes, no, and I don't vote. That's an option, not to vote?
That is correct, Alderman.
Okay, well, I apologize, I should have known, I just thought I was responsibly up here is to vote for things, yea or nay, but I thank you for that, I didn't know that was an option. Thanks.
Thank you very much. There's been a motion, a second on the floor, to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned.
Have a good night.